Bozeman, he is, lives in Ward Three and he's been working on the Building Committee now for three years. He has kids at Fairview School. He seems to be a very capable and very knowledgeable man. That's all I can say. I only know him from the Building Committee. But he's enthusiastic. He does not want to run. He's not in the running for after. He works out of town at night and so, his offer was to help us out.
That's good. Alfreda?
And I'm bringing forth Karen Matthew. She's 24 years in education, K-8. She has a BS at UMO, Masters at St. Joseph's College, doctoral level coursework, two decades in classroom, reading recovery training. She's a district ride literacy coach at RSU Number Four. And I do know that she, of course, her name is on the ballot, but you know, to me would be a nice seamless transition, not simply because she's on the ballot, but I'm looking at her credentials and how it could help us as we move forward in the next few speedy weeks.
I agree with you. I agree that both candidates are excellent candidates. They both show an education background of further than high school and wherever. So I think that we have two good candidates right now and I'm sure, I'm assuming that Karen spoke to you?
I call to say, would she be opposed to my bringing her name forward?
Okay, good.
And it originated with me.
It originated with you, okay. Any other discussion here tonight? Okay, how do you want to proceed? Do you want to just take an up and down vote on the people? Do you want to do secret ballots? So what would you like to do?
No secret ballot.
Anybody? All right, we'll take an, Dan?
Vote, yeah.
Just vote, okay. So we can't vote in executive session?
No, you would just advise right now and then when we go into...
Not executive session.
You would, right, when you get to the consent agenda for the agenda, you would make a motion to make the appointment and then we would, you know you have to have unanimous to put it on the agenda, then once you have it on the agenda, then it would be an item and then you would appoint. And then that person would probably, we would talk to city clerk to get them sworn in so that they'll be ready for October 2nd.
Okay, all right. Yes. All right, so let's go alphabetical. John Bozeman, his last name is B, begins with a B, up or down? Yes or no?
So individually?
I don't understand.
Okay, so we're going to give an up and down because we have to put this on, we can't vote in workshop. So we have to go and add it to, a name to the agenda, okay? So I'm asking for John Bozeman, all in favor of John Bozeman? Up or down?
We're getting kind of consensus, which name?
Right, just a consensus.
Yeah.
Up, anybody? All right. Karen Matthews? Okay.
Okay.
All right, good. We're all in agreement that it will be Karen and I'm assuming you're Karen? Congratulations and welcome.
We assume you'll have the votes during the regular meeting. And the election.
Yeah, right, right. All that. All right, so that was the whole process for tonight's special meeting. So we're going to move on, we got about 15 minutes. So we can't begin until seven, so...
Take a break?
Have a break for a moment.
We'll have a break. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Bye. Bye. Okay, let's call this meeting to order. I call this meeting of the Auburn School Committee the second meeting of September to order, please, and we'll start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
A pledge of allegiance to the United States of America and to a republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We'll start with introductions and we'll start on this end.
Adam Hanson, business manager.
Michelle McClellan, Assistant Superintendent.
Alfreda Fuanio, City Council, Ward Four, representative to the mayor.
Dan Poisson, Ward Five.
Pat Gaudier, at large.
Katie Gannon, Superintendent.
Bonnie Hayes, Ward Two.
Kate Fontaine, at large.
Brian Bellinette, Ward Four.
Bud Manili, Ward One.
Thank you. I have some communications that Katie and I have received and I'll read it in public here tonight. It says, from the Lewiston Public Schools, and it says, "Dear Auburn Public Schools Community, we wish to express our condolences upon learning of the loss of your School Committee Chairperson, Mr. Tom Kendall. Mr. Kendall was certainly a role model as an advocate for public education. His passion for learning and serving the community that was so beloved to him is something for all of us to emulate. Understanding that words cannot describe the collective emotions of Auburn Public Schools, it is equally important that you feel our support. If there's anything that Lewiston Public Schools can do to assist in easing your pain, please do not hesitate to reach out. We are just across the river and we are here to help you in any way we can. Signed by Todd A. Finn, Superintendent of Lewiston Public Schools, and Mark Hare, who is the School Committee Chairperson." We've received two other condolence notes from two other places. One from Danielle Tracy, who is the Chair of the Falmouth School Department, and Andrel Carlton, who is RSU Four Superintendent. So we have, people are noticing what we're doing here. It was, it's a great loss, but we're forging ahead. So that was my communications, Katie's in mine, Pat. Anybody else have any communications?
No, but I think those were very, very nice of those individuals and I spoke with the Superintendent last night. We went to the meeting because of the plan, the Tree Streets Plan, and he spoke with me again, giving me on, you know, on behalf of everyone, his condolences. Seems like a very nice man, so it's really nice to know we have nice neighbors around.
Okay, so we're moving on. We're moving on to the consent agenda. We have approval, I need approval of the agenda, but before we do that, I want to make note that there is a consent, another page of consent agenda that was put out this afternoon late. So that needs to be included when we make our motion for that. And also, I need to have a motion to add, I need to have a motion to add the new person to, to vote on, the new person, Karen, on our agenda. The appointment, thank you.
That's okay.
So, okay, so the approval of the agenda, you have, you moved it?
A second?
Second.
Any discussion on it? All in favor? Okay. All right, and we will add that down just before the Superintendent's report?
Well, you can put it as, where else are you voting? So put it under your, your business. Yeah.
And, and just before the Superintendent starts her report?
Yeah.
Okay. So approval of the minutes, please. Can I have a motion to approve the minutes?
Move to approve the minutes of September 4th.
Second.
Okay, any discussion on that? Okay, all in favor? All opposed? Moving on. This is the time for public participation. The School Committee asks the public to remember our system-wide code of conduct and the six core values of respect, honesty, courage, compassion, fairness, and responsibility while directly addressing the group. Our policy, JIC, states that we expect people to treat others as you would like to be treated, use language that is appropriate and kind, and be truthful and forthright in your speech and actions. Her policy, BEDH, Public Participation at School Committee Meetings, citizens may comment on any general topics related to the school system during this portion of the agenda. Comments related to specific agenda items may be held until, to the appropriate time. Please be succinct and speak once for less than three minutes, or not more than three minutes. The School Committee will not respond to you right here tonight, but at a later date, the School, the School Department will respond to your concerns. All right, so let's open it up to the first person that would like to speak tonight. Anybody here would like to speak or we're going to move right on? Please give your name and your, you know the drill.
Barbara Hawannick, 134 Nottingham Road. I am hoping to bring to attention, which I don't think I should have to do, it took three weeks for my son, who is a junior at EL, to get a functioning computer. I think that's unacceptable. He was told from the first day of school and on multiple occasions after that by the tech support person that he didn't have time to put in a password for him that was needed since the updating of his computer. I understand that it's one person who is taking care of 900 students, but that shouldn't be a surprise to the school that this is going to happen. 900 computers need to be serviced. If we think there's going to be an overflow and too much work for him, there are things called per diem workers, where we could get and staff extra people for the first week of school. I can understand him going a week without a computer, but it's unacceptable for him to have gone three weeks. I hope that moving forward in future years that this doesn't happen. It shouldn't ever happen and trying not to get too upset. Thank you.
Thank you, Barbara.
Thank you. I can check into that.
Karen Matthew, 9 Amberly Way. I think I'm going to follow up Barbara's comment with the exact same thing that is happening, that happened to my son as well. Today was the day he finally got his password in. So I think part of the issue being that every time he showed up to ask the tech person to help, he was told he was too busy to go away. At the same time, he has teachers who are getting very upset with him for not having a working laptop. He then had to take out his cellphone to access Google Classroom and was given a detention for having, or the threat of a detention for having his class, for having his device out in class. Part of what also concerns me is the fact that emails around this situation went completely unanswered, from Mr. Robinson, complete silence from emails, and I will not call out the tech person who's there because he is drowning, I'm sure, in many devices. I would have appreciated either some type of, if your device is not working, please use this device as a, as a trans, as another one instead. My concern is that now he is backing up. I know STAR assessment window, I know the window is closing soon, I know he has accommodations and I am worried that the accommodations will not be met because he finally just got his device now. He is catching up on many assignments because he has not had that device. In my school department, we do not send tech people to the primary schools and to our three, four, or five schools. Until our, our high school is set up first. They need the devices more than our kindergartners need their iPads. So I think in the future, when we roll these things out, we need to look at just the simple way we are rolling this out. And that is something that can be a simple fix. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll have the Superintendent check that. Anybody else?
Okay, let's call this meeting to order. I call this meeting of the Auburn School Committee the second meeting of September to order please, and we'll start with the Pledge of Allegiance. We'll start with introductions, and we'll start on this end.
Adam Hansen, Business Manager.
Michelle McClellan, Assistant Superintendent.
Alfreda Foino, City Council Ward Four, Representative to the Mayor.
Dan Poisson, Ward Five.
Pat Gaudier, at large.
Katie Gannon, Superintendent.
Bonnie Hayes, Ward Two.
Faith Fontaine, at large.
Brian Bownat, Ward Four.
Bud Manili, Ward One.
Thank you. I have some communications that Katie and I have received, and I'll read it in public here tonight. It says, "From the Lewiston Public Schools," and it says, "Dear Auburn Public Schools Community, we wish to express our condolences upon learning of the loss of your school committee chair, Mr. Tom Kendall. Mr. Kendall was certainly a role model as an advocate for public education. His passion for learning and serving the community that was so beloved to him is something for all of us to emulate. Understanding that words cannot describe the collective emotions of Auburn Public Schools, it is equally important that you feel our support. If there's anything that Lewiston Public Schools can do to assist in easing your pain, please do not hesitate to reach out. We are just across the river, and we are here to help you in any way we can. Signed by Todd A. Finn, Superintendent of Lewiston Public Schools, and Mark Hare, who is the school committee chairperson." We've received two other condolence notes from two other places, one from Daniel Tracy, who is the Chair of the Falmouth School Department, and Andrel Carlton, who is RSU Four Superintendent. So we have, people are noticing what we're doing here. It was, it's a great loss, but we're forging ahead. So that was my communications, Katie's in mine. Pat, anybody else have any communications?
No, but I think those were very, very nice of those individuals. And I spoke with the superintendent last night. We went to the meeting because of the plan, the Tree Streets Plan, and he spoke with me again, giving me, you know, on behalf of everyone, his condolences. Seems like a very nice man, so it's really nice to know we have nice neighbors around.
Okay, so we're moving on. We're moving on to the consent agenda. We have approval, I need approval of the agenda, but before we do that, I want to make note that there is a consent, another page of consent agenda that was put out this afternoon late, so that needs to be included when we make our motion for that. And also, I need to have a motion to add, I need to have a motion to add the new person to vote on, the new person, Karen, on our agenda. The appointment, thank you.
That's okay.
So, okay, so the approval of the agenda, you have, you moved it?
A second?
Second.
Any discussion on it? All in favor? Okay. All right. And we will add that down just before the superintendent's report?
Well, you can put it as, where else are you voting? So put it under your business. Yeah.
And just before the superintendent starts her report?
Yeah.
Okay. So approval of the minutes, please. Can I have a motion to approve the minutes?
Move to approve the minutes of September 4th.
Second.
Okay. Any discussion on that? Okay, all in favor? All opposed? Moving on. This is the time for public participation. The school committee asks the public to remember our system-wide code of conduct and the six core values of respect, honesty, courage, compassion, fairness, and responsibility while directly addressing the group. Our policy, JIC, states that we expect people to treat others as you would like to be treated, use language that is appropriate and kind, and be truthful and forthright in your speech and actions. Her policy, BEDH, Public Participation at School Committee Meetings, citizens may comment on any general topics related to the school system during this portion of the agenda. Comments related to specific agenda items may be held until, to the appropriate time. Please be succinct and speak once for less than three minutes, or not more than three minutes. The school committee will not respond to you right here tonight, but at a later date, the school, the school department will respond to your concerns. All right, so let's open it up to the first person that would like to speak tonight. Anybody here would like to speak, or we're going to move right on?
Old and red.
Please give your name and your, you know the drill.
Barbara Hawannick, 134 Nottingham Road. I am hoping to bring to attention, which I don't think I should have to do, it took three weeks for my son, who is a junior at EL, to get a functioning computer. I think that's unacceptable. He was told from the first day of school and on multiple occasions after that by the tech support person that he didn't have time to put in a password for him that was needed since the updating of his computer. I understand that it's one person who is taking care of 900 students, but that shouldn't be a surprise to the school that this is going to happen. 900 computers need to be serviced. If we think there's going to be an overflow and too much work for him, there are things called per diem workers, where we could get and staff extra people for the first week of school. I can understand him going a week without a computer, but it's unacceptable for him to have gone three weeks. I hope that moving forward, in future years, that this doesn't happen. It shouldn't ever happen, and trying not to get too upset. Thank you.
Thank you, Barbara.
Thank you. I can check into that.
Karen Matthew, 9 Amberly Way. I think I'm going to follow up Barbara's comment with the exact same thing that is happening, that happened to my son as well. Today was the day he finally got his password in. So I think part of the issue being that every time he showed up to ask the tech person to help, he was told he was too busy to go away. At the same time, he has teachers who are getting very upset with him for not having a working laptop. He then had to take out his cellphone to access Google Classroom and was given a detention for having, or the threat of a detention for having his class, for having his device out in class. Part of what also concerns me is the fact that emails around this situation went completely unanswered, from Mr. Robinson, complete silence from emails, and I will not call out the tech person who's there because he is drowning, I'm sure, in many devices. I would have appreciated either some type of, if your device is not working, please use this device as a, as a trans, as another one instead. My concern is that now he is backing up. I know STAR assessment window, I know the window is closing soon, I know he has accommodations, and I am worried that the accommodations will not be met because he finally just got his device now. He is catching up on many assignments because he has not had that device. In my school department, we do not send tech people to the primary schools and to our three, four, or five schools, until our high school is set up first. They need the devices more than our kindergarteners need their iPads. So I think in the future, when we roll these things out, we need to look at just the simple way we are rolling this out, and that is something that can be a simple fix. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll have the superintendent check that.
Victoria Langelier, Ward Five, 217 Third Street. First off, I'd like to offer my condolences to the Kendall family and to you, the school board, as his colleagues, for the tragic loss of Mr. Kendall.
Thank you.
I have two comments. One would be that the driveway going to EL, to the bell tower, all the way back to the statue is like a war zone at this point. I watched four cars in front of me ground out this morning when I was getting ready to drop off the kids to school, and it's causing more of an issue clogging up and backing up traffic. Really do appreciate by the tennis courts, the new pavement, but hoping that maybe we can fix this a little bit before the hot top stops being produced. My other comment would be in regards to the last meeting that we had about the Nishi scores being translated on the, on the websites and stuff like that, about how it doesn't matter, that it doesn't have any difference. I just recently had my house refinanced, and when the refinance company that was assessing my home came by, they look at those scores. Community members that want to be, future community members, look at those scores, and it's not just affecting our schools with a C minus, but it's also affecting our home values in our neighborhoods. I was told that if my home was in a different neighborhood because of the rating of our schools, that my house would be almost $50,000 more, and that's unacceptable. And he made sure to point out that it was because of the rates of our schools that our home values are going down. So it doesn't just affect our parents and our families, it also affects any community member in the city because we all pay taxes, we all have homes, and eventually, at some point, people are going to try to sell their homes.
Thank you very much. We had, we had some discussion on that earlier this fall, and we'll continue to have that.
Hi, I'm Sandy Masters, and I live at 5 Marshall Avenue, and I'm just here to speak on a general statement about Katie's contract. I've been a resident in Auburn for many years, graduated from Edward Little, and our two daughters did as well. Just a side note, Katie had no idea I was going to speak tonight regarding this. As you may be aware, Katie is a friend of mine and has been for many years. No one in this room knows her better than I do. I'm not here to argue policy change or discuss issues related to decisions she's made that spark debate. I understand the issues and voted for members, you all, to this committee to collaborate with her to make decisions in the best interest of the students. First, I'd like to mention that Katie is well-educated, innovative, open-minded, supportive, and most important, she cares about the students in her schools. I sense this when we have conversations about our chosen professions. She's a positive, caring individual, has a sense of humor, and can be quite funny. She's several, several times she has declined invitations with her friends so she can attend a hockey game, football game, middle school or high school play, just because she wants to show her support. This may seem insignificant to some, but to me, it shows she cares. She's all about the students' growth and success. She's active on forms of social media congratulating students on achievements and athletic teams on their successes. She's a forward thinker, understanding you can't move forward without change. Second, she oversees and supports approximately 600 employees, manages and revises the school budget, attends educational opportunities, and responds to student, parent, and staff issues on a daily basis. Not to mention, she regularly meets with the Auburn School Committee and the Auburn City Council, just to name a few, and I'm sure I've left out several other duties. What type of leader would she be if she continually succumbed to differences of opinions from others? She wouldn't be a leader at all, and certainly not one that is well-respected. She has made, she has to make decisions based on her education, current knowledge, and evidence-based data, all in the best interest of the students. Unfortunately, she can't make, possibly make everyone happy, that's unrealistic. There are many nights she returns home late in the evening, unable to spend time with her family, but I never hear her complain. She understands this comes with the job and accepts it. Some are concerned about her salary, frankly, I feel she deserves every penny of it. Third, Katie has been at the forefront advocating for the construction of the new high school. She, as well as many of her colleagues and volunteers, sacrificed hours of their time collaborating on what type of school would satisfy the needs of the students and the community. She tried to instill patience in us every time the state denied the funds, telling people it's not our time yet, knowing that constructing the school without state funding would not be supported by the taxpayers. Does this make sense, does it make sense at this, at this stage to replace the superintendent? She has been here since the inception of this process. I feel it would be a disservice to this community who support this project to have someone else take part who doesn't know our community and who has not been involved in the decisions that got us to this point. Katie is passionate about our community because she has a personal connection to it. This is about a community that has relied on her to lead us and move us forward to desperately improve our school and attract families to this area. She and all those that worked with her deserve to bring it to a conclusion and participate in opening of the new Edward Little High School. In closing, I feel Katie is someone I believe can continue to leave our schools with dedication, compassion, and pride for the students and the community. I also agree with extending the process to evaluate her position. It will give committee members more time to reflect on what she has contributed. It saddens me that one of Katie's greatest supporters is no longer with us, but I know there are many others that feel as I do and support her as well. Two things I've realized over the years, there's always two sides to every story, and be careful what you wish for. Thank you for your time and consideration for a continuation as superintendent.
Thank you, Ms. Masters. Anybody else like to speak at this time?
My name is Amy Hasby, I live at 75 Chapley Street. I have two children in the Auburn Public Schools, they've been in here since kindergarten. Now, one's in seventh grade, one's a junior. Currently, I work in the Lewiston Middle School and Lewiston High School as a nurse practitioner. So I've been following the Lewiston superintendent, and I think there's interesting things going on in Lewiston. Lots of priority, his, one of his first priorities is how to, figuring out how to engage teachers, students, and families. And I've been following his Twitter account. So yesterday, one of his tweets made a big impression on me. I'm going to read part of it. So it's saying, "As a community member, how often does it feel, how does it feel when you walk into one of Lewiston's school buildings? How are you treated? Are you greeted warmly, provided a comfortable place to sit, treated like you matter? Are folks acknowledging you?" So it made a big impression on me that the leader for the Lewiston School Department is really just bringing to the forefront again that we need to make people feel welcome and like their input is really valued. A simple thing. So hopefully, the tides are turning, but there has been times in this, in this community where I feel like in this room, the input that the public has has not been appreciated or heard. And I think maybe part of that is the process for, for these committee meetings that, you know, the public input is given, but there's no chance to have any feedback on what we're saying. So that what we're saying is just like thrown at the wall of the school committee and just like slides down with no, no feedback at all. So what, what is, what's the process? I mean, how does, how does the public know that yes, we're being listened to and these items are going to somehow be addressed, even if it's just a conversation?
There is a conversation that happens between the person that is suggesting that something's wrong and the superintendent, or the administrator that that person's child is in. There's a conversation, and to my knowledge, people get back, in this, people in the system get, get back to people that have issues on it. So. Well, and we are going to start a new process because we do, we hear you, we're listening, and it has felt like that for us too, so I appreciate you saying that. So what we're going to do at superintendent report is I have, like I prepared some information from the last meeting in response to what was said last week, so we're going to try that. And also, if there's things that come up that we can quickly answer or inform about, we will do that. And then if there's things we have to get more information, we'll get back to you. Like the, the technology, I wasn't aware of that, so I definitely will be checking in with the high school around that process and with Peter Robinson not getting back to someone. So often, you don't see what's behind the scene, I think that is probably your point, is I take notes throughout and then I follow back up if there's something that I've heard. So we are going to try that this evening.
Faith. And Amy, thank you for bringing that up because it's very hard sitting here too and not responding because I think it comes off that we're, we don't care, or it's, I've said numerous times, you know, I hate sitting here and just listening because it's very hard for me as a person not to respond. So we, I think all of us have actually reached out and said to Katie, we need to look into this and how we can change the process, so we're not feeling this way and you're not feeling that way because it just, it's a very uncomfortable situation for both of us.
And I think it's, it's just something that kind of builds on each other, you know? Nobody's talking and nobody wants to participate then because they feel like what we're saying is not being heard. So I feel like that's a good step forward if the process can change a little bit, so I appreciate that.
So we're going to try it tonight, and we'll try it from, until January. You can give us feedback on that.
Thank you.
Next person, please.
Warren Lunig, I'm from Hebron, but I'm a math teacher at AMS. I figured I should, I just happened to be around, so I'll stop by. I'm a math guy, so I'm into numbers, and I've taken this focus on attendance this year, so our attendance rate on Team Katana is 98.3 percent, so kudos to Team Katana and the students and their families for a
Absolutely.
...great job and making sure they're calling in their kids if they're out sick or have a doctor's appointment or something. Figured I'd share that bit of good news.
Thank you very much.
That's for the first 12 days of the year, so.
Very nice, thank you very much.
That's good news.
Nice news. Anybody else would like to speak tonight?
Laura Garcia, 20 Skilling's Corner Road in Auburn, two students in the system. I just wanted to follow up on what Victoria was saying earlier about the websites that people look at, the Great Schools website, there's one called School Digger, there's one called Niche, and I know a lot of attention was given to that, I think, two meetings ago about not to trust the information on there, that it's not accurate, et cetera. I actually have looked at and followed the statistics, both the historical data that was provided by Dr. Doris to all of you a short time ago, and I've been looking at the different cohorts and the trends, and I've shared a little bit of my observations with a few of you. But I did just want to go on the record that there is accurate information available through the state of Maine on what our statistics are. So if you look at those and then compare them to what is showing up on Niche or School Digger or, or Great Schools, they have accurate information. What I can tell you is, reporting on the state website, our total student body, 3,581 students, total teachers, 293, money spent per student, 12,123, schools in the district, eight, English learners, 5.6 percent, economically disadvantaged, 56.2 percent, chronic absenteeism, 20.5 percent. Our graduation rate, 77.9 percent for four years. For the five and six-year mark, our graduation rate actually drops to 76.9 percent, which I found interesting when I compared to other districts, usually that number goes up. English language, 40.8 percent is our proficiency rating across the district. This is not for any individual school, it's across the district. Math is at 28.1 percent, and science, 51.8 percent. Anybody who's interested can go to this website and can look at these statistics, and I think it's a valuable exercise to compare them to other districts, both in our area, because as we've talked about, we're looking to make Auburn more appealing because of the new high school, but we do need to have better stats than the other areas around us, because otherwise, people will buy a cheaper home in Oxford and put their kids in the Oxford system where there are better results, or they might go to Levitt, or they might go to Lisbon. So I actually have started putting this data on an Excel spreadsheet because I understand Mr. Manili has made a request to compare stats. And it is an interesting exercise, and I would encourage each one of you to do it. For example, I found that Portland has comparable amount of economically disadvantaged individuals and has English learners that exceed our percentage, and they actually are performing quite well. And on one hand, you could say they spend more money per student, but even if they do that, it's worth looking or maybe talking with them about how they are having the success that they're having. So I, I just would encourage you, if you don't want to look at Niche and School Digger or Great Schools for that information, then look at the state of Maine, their website, and it's readily available. Thank you.
So Laura, can I just clarify about the Niche, what comments were made? Because I did speak to the person at Niche, and so it wasn't that we didn't care, we were, I was trying to understand how the data is put together, because we have different schools performing differently and where the stats are. So, no, I just, I wanted to clarify-
No, I know, and one thing about the school, the website for the state, you can look at the schools as well as the district.
Yeah, I was just clarifying the Niche comment, that we didn't care and we didn't, it was inaccurate information. What I did do is speak to them about-
Yes, I know, I know, but Ms. Hayes said even at our last meeting that you can't trust those websites for information, and I'm just saying, they actually are accurate.
Right, but I wanted to, the public to hear that when I spoke to Niche, that how we're ranked across the state, it's not how you're ranked individually within your district. So, because when I was talking about data around our different schools and so forth, he said there are certain schools in certain ranges, certain other schools, so it's hard to move out of a range depending on where you are in relation to other school districts. So I just, I wanted you to know that I did try to follow up to see how we can shift those grades to get more-
I think we need to shift the grades by improving performance in the district.
Right, but it's comparing to Falmouth and Yarmouth and stuff, so if they're going to be the A schools, I'm just telling you what he explained to me.
Yeah, no, that's okay.
I'm just, I'm giving you the nation-
Yeah, yeah, no, 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 I'm, also I'm saying is if you want the, if people want the stats, go to the state of Maine.
Absolutely.
But don't dismiss some of the stats that are on those websites because they do reflect what is on the state of Maine website, and it is what people go to look at when they're looking at real estate, which is what Victoria said. I understand what you're saying.
I don't want, I don't want to debate, I'm just telling people that we do care, and I looked into it and was trying to figure out how to raise those. Thank you. Anybody else like to speak?
Simpson, I'm at 302 Lake Street, how are you?
Good, how are you, Dave?
I'm going to enjoy this feedback a little because I've sat here several times over several years with questions I've never had a response, never. But my concern tonight isn't mine, it's actually, my son is a junior. Since the beginning of the school year, he's been trying to remedy a situation with a class that he took last fall, excuse me, last year, last spring semester, where he was, to finish the class was to take a test, that's what he had to do. And I think it was a self-paced, excuse me, a self-paced class. That's been shifted this year, and he's being forced to take the class over, and every attempt he's made to have that fixed, he's been getting, given pretty much, this is like a parallel process for me, because like I said, every question I've asked this board, I've never got a response to. And much like the folks at the computers, the teachers showing them away, that's, that's his experience so far, so I, I will look forward to the response from this committee on that.
Thank you. Thanks, Dave. Anyone else? Okay, at this time, I'm closing public participation, and I thank you very much for all of your good thoughts, and we'll move right on to the next item. Student information is not going to be tonight, obviously, because we don't have any students, and we're, we're going to start taking applications. And we received one today. We did receive an application today? Yes. Okay, good, good. So we are going to start taking applications, and Katie and I will meet with the applicants that come in, and we'll go from there.
Bonnie, what is the criteria for-
You know, Faith, I don't know. There is a policy on that, and so that has been up at Edward Little High School, so we'll make sure they get that information out.
So we're advertising to students?
Yes, yes, so they'll, they'll do more advertising, make sure they know when the deadline is. But I've had two students approach me in the hallway and ask me how you do that. I know Mr. Latush has been working with students that have been asking about it, so we'll definitely follow up. And can we please have the policy sent to us? What it, what it actually is, just email it to us so we'll- I don't know. Yes.
Could I have a follow-up question to Faith's question? She asked a valid question. I've always wondered why the same individuals are there for like a couple of years. Do you, to me, there are so many students, and they might all want that opportunity. Do we limit?
No, you can, we can look at the policy, and I think students who have stayed, have stayed, and then, yes, you can say we like, you know, change over each year, so we can look at that.
I would like to see that.
Yeah.
Thank you.
All right. Superintendent Report? Superintendent-
Superintendent report.
Okay, so I'm going to speak to a couple of items-
Actually, we haven't, we are going to vote on.
You don't want me to do public participation?
Go ahead.
Yes. Okay, so someone broke, brought up about lunch bills, overdue notices. So I spoke to Paula Roulard, our lunch director, food service director, and she said that overdue bills were sent home with students at East Auburn at Fairview. And she and I discussed those slips being sent home through the mail, so we're going to be trying that. This will be done for East Auburn, Fairview, Auburn Middle School, and ELHS once a month, and we will monitor the cost of that mailing to just, you know, is there a different way we could do it, but we will be doing it as we try this year. Also, what will be posted on our Facebook page for people connected to the food service is having, checking, and I have it here, we're going to be posting around the changes that have happened in our food service due to the Act to Prevent Food Shaming in Maine's Public Schools. So I'll read it to all of you, and then you'll see it on Facebook. But Edward Little High School offers breakfast during the first class period until nine a.m. for students who aren't able to access breakfast before the first bell. Students may ask for a pass from their teacher to go to the cafeteria. Universal breakfast continues throughout the district at no cost to families. Auburn Middle School and Edward Little High School students who do not have funds available in their lunch account will be able to charge a reimbursable meal. So it's not à la carte, like go get chips or things like that. And as Paula and I said, whole grain chips, healthy as best we can. And, but the reimbursable meal of the choice that's there, as defined by the Department of Ed. I said à la carte, for example, the waters, extra sandwiches. Edward Little High School does have a salad bar, which is included as a reimbursable meal. So Paula is monitoring meal choice for all lunches at E, um, EL. There's no longer a charge to families who qualify for the reduced lunch plan. That is also a change. Also, what will be posted is any Q and As that DO, the Maine DOE put together, so that you can see that as well. I already told you about sending home the bills. The other things that we wanted to note is our fruit and vegetable grants are continuing at Washmore, Walton, Sherwood Heights, and Park Avenue, who qualify for those grants. After-school snacks are still continuing at the CLC locations. And we're still monitoring, as I said, Edward Little on choices throughout their lunches. What's difficult at EL is the lunch counts are not reliable, so they, they have to monitor availability of food, but there's always a deli option and a salad bar option available. And as always, if you need support with outstanding lunch bills or open to any feedback regarding the food service, you can contact the food service department, and they do have a, on our website, you can look up food service, and they have a lot of information about it as well. So I wanted to get back on food service. The other thing, I spoke to Michelle McCollin, who oversees our policy review, and she knows that we have been asked to prioritize Section C, which includes the superintendent evaluation process and job description for the new school committee starting in January. There is not a statute as to how often policies need to be reviewed. I, I know somebody brought up that they were in the criminal corrections and there's set dates. However, our first priorities are updating policies when laws change. So whenever you come out of the legislative time, there's lots of changes to laws, and we get policies that need to be updated, so we're in compliance. So those always push in precedence of things that need to be corrected. You also gave feedback around a formal exit interview process for staff that leave the district. So we, at our Western Maine Superintendent's meeting last week, asked if those who do formal exit interviews could send materials, and so Michelle's been collecting that. We will put a draft together for the school committee to have a discussion on, so that you can revise or add and, and make decisions regarding that. So we are in the process of working on that. A reminder that on October 2nd, we will have a workshop from six to seven with Steve Westler, who is a consultant we're working with. Steve Westler is a human rights educator, trainer, and advocate specializing in conflict resolution. He works with schools, colleges, nonprofit organizations, healthcare institutions, law enforcement agency, workplace and communities to prevent bias, harassment, discrimination, and violence. And he does have a website. I took that right from his website. I have also met with Virginia Durani, I hope I'm saying her name right, Durani, who is a professor from UMF and CMCC and also a parent, who works, um, her work centers on strengthening the sense of belonging for all. And so she and I have met and we're looking at how, what can she offer as well to our school department. I also am scheduling a meeting with Laura Legori from Mine Bridge Center. She did a training at the Lewiston School Department on implicit bias training, so she and I will be meeting as well about how that can be brought to our staff. But we will talk more on October 2nd. So those are the items heard, so I wanted to make sure we got that.
Michelle, do we have any, do we have any policies that are under review right now?
Yes, we have policies that are still from the last legislative session that, as Katie was saying, are up for review because of changes in legislation. There's been, the last couple of legislative sessions have been chock full of education-related laws that have changed, statute that has been updated. And so that always means you folks have to look at the policies and review the policies and, and make those changes as are-
So Tom Kendall was on that committee, as well as Bob Meneely, right? Bob, you've been to those meetings and the policy meetings? You've been to them and, and you know what we're doing with them, right? Okay.
But you should probably going to need to-
Yes, we will, we'll need to appoint somebody else. So it would seem those would be the first ones we want to put on the priority list as far as changing-
The compliance stuff.
Compliance. Absolutely, on it. So, yes. So at some point, next meeting, I'll ask for somebody to replace Tom on that committee, because I think we do have a few of them, few policies that need to be completed, be-
They're ready.
-right off, that we're working on.
So I think what we've done in the past, if you're interested in serving, let Bonnie know if you're interested in serving on the policy, and then she'll just make that announcement at the next meeting.
Okay. I just have a follow-up question about the lunch.
Sure.
You named certain schools. Are, are all of the schools involved in receiving a US mail, you know?
No, all other schools do not have, because they have the, they're, they're CI, they're called CEP schools, which is Community Eligibility Program. So those students all have free lunch and breakfast, right?
Okay.
And there's, there's certain guidelines, so we've been watching Fairview's qualification, East Auburn. I know people have mentioned, can we, if we made everyone free, and I know the finance committee looked at it, Adam, a couple of years ago or last year, how much would the budget be impacted if we did do that? So we can obviously revisit that. But we have looked at that and run numbers, especially against how much money is owed and so forth. So, you know, we continue to work with families and around that.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay. All right. Are you done your superintendents?
I am.
Good job. All right. Now we're moving on.
So tonight is a business manager's evening.
It's his show.
Oh, and you do the appointment of Karen first, yes.
Right. Adam, you got five, five minutes before you have to be on, okay? Because we did agree that we would have add the-
I was ready, all right. I'll wait on-
We did agree that we would add the appointment of Karen Matthews at this time. So can I have an, a motion to entertain Lou? A second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Anybody opposed? Looks good. Thank you very much. Karen?
Congratulations.
Well, 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 let Sue Delary know about getting you signed, uh, sworn in.
Karen and I spoke-
And just for the record, this isn't a, it's Matthew.
Matthew.
Thank you, thank you.
Matthew.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you very much.
If you don't tell us, we'll keep doing it, so that's good.
That's why I'm trying to be very respectful.
Matthew, okay. All right, thank you. All right, so congratulations to you, and we're moving on. Now you're on, Adam.
That was in five minutes.
That's right, it was less than that.
We'll go with it.
Yes.
Well, good evening, everyone. The first thing we're going to talk about is the end of the FY nineteen budget year and balance transfers that are needed by the school committee. This was an item that was sent out with the packet, and Michelle has some extra copies if anybody wants one. So I think I mentioned a few meetings back that we were looking at needing a transfer to cover two of our cost centers. And I'll just back up one second and review the fact that by Maine statute, we have to have our budget in eleven different cost centers. So each of those cost centers is separate authorization to spend money. And if any of those individual cost centers need to go over the original budget, the board has the authority to transfer up to five percent out of any one cost center into other cost centers, provided that the overall budget cannot be exceeded. So this year, there were two cost centers that exceeded their budget, special education, which is no surprise because we've been talking about it all year, as well as system administration. And those were the two I mentioned a while back. And the auditors have been here, they've completed most of their work. And so at this point, I feel comfortable asking you to make the transfer, and I don't foresee any more surprises coming along that might change these balances. So I'll quickly walk through what we're looking at here. And so in special education, the budget was exceeded by two hundred sixty-nine thousand eight sixty-one, which is two point seven percent of the special ed budget. And this was, just like last year, higher than budgeted out of district tuition costs, as well as associated health services that go along with that.
Could I ask a question at this point? I know we were not able to hire somebody to start our little, you know, pro, program for children with autism and stuff.
Autism program?
Does this have something to do with that?
No, this is last year's budget.
This is last year's budget.
Okay, all right.
The autism program is up and running. Alfred, you should come visit. We'll schedule, the, the autism program is up and running, so-
Oh, definitely.
I invite you to come visit.
Let's stay on track here because Adam's got a big night. All right, Adam.
So that's the special ed story. The other cost center that went over budget was system administration by thirteen thousand four eighty-six, which is one point five percent of that cost center. And there were two major contributing factors that I could pinpoint, one being in the run-up to the referendum for the new high school, we did contract with Marshall Communications to assist with public, public relations, and that was a total cost of sixteen thousand two fifteen. And then early last year in the school year, we met with staff in the central office and gave staff the option to increase their workday from seven and a half hours to eight hours, just given the reality of the workloads that everyone's facing, and no one's having less tasks on their plate. And everyone took us up on that offer. So that caused the salary lines within system admin to be exceeded by thirteen thousand eight sixty-six. And then we did have savings in some other accounts that offset some of that, resulting in the total of thirteen thousand four eighty-six over.
If I might have a question. Thank you, thank you, Adam, for putting all this together because it really is-
You're welcome.
-very, very good, because it's easy to understand. I just have a question about the system administration, since the, it was over expended by thirteen thousand four eighty-six. Why would we be putting twenty thousand into that?
I, yeah, I was going to get to that, but I can get to it now.
Cool.
I read your mind.
You apparently do. So I always do a little more than the actual amount, just in case something comes up and the auditors say, hey, you need to move a thousand dollars, that really belonged over here. I don't want to have to come back and ask you to do another transfer. So that's all that is, it's a little cushion. It doesn't really affect anything that's actually happening.
Okay.
But it's just a safety.
Thank you for that explanation.
You're welcome. So what we're requesting is that the amounts needed be transferred out of regular instruction, which is our larger, largest cost center in the entire budget. Regular instruction was under expended this year by three eighty-seven, three forty, which is two point two percent of the cost center. And so looking through that, the most notable expenditure areas that were under expended, to give a snapshot of that, the teacher salary lines as a whole were under expended by two hundred twenty-one thousand, which represents one point eight percent of the teacher's salary lines in the regular instruction cost center. The retirement stipends, which are budgeted mainly under regular instruction, was under expended on the whole by seventy-four thousand, which is sixty-four percent, under expended by sixty-four percent versus what we had budgeted for possible retirements. Supplies and equipment, with all lines added together, were under expended by about sixty-two thousand, which represents twenty-five percent of those lines. And textbook lines added together were about twenty thousand, which represents seventeen percent of those specific lines. So those are the, generally speaking, the areas where there was extra money available in that cost center. So for the sake of simplicity, the amount needed to cover the overages can come from regular instruction. And so after meeting with the finance committee, we're requesting that the school committee transfer two hundred eighty thousand into special ed and twenty thousand in, into system admin for a total transfer of three hundred thousand.
Any discussion on that?
Just one more question. Sorry to be a thon in everyone's side, but textbooks. I had some information regarding the need for textbooks, especially like the program, if you're involved with, this is not in your, your purview to answer, but if we're involved in the Cockens program, books go along with that. And are we providing enough textbooks and reading books to our staff before we make this decision?
So I could probably give you a very general answer to that, and I don't know if Katie has anything to add, but the textbook and supply lines that are being mentioned here are building-based, so those are at the discretion of the building administrators. So there was no directive for anyone to freeze their lines or anything like that. So this is where we ended up at the end of the year, based on that. So that's just a general comment.
So when we meet with principals, as we put the budget together, we, we review their current lines and encourage them to purchase. But they also don't purchase just to purchase. And so we talk a lot about what are they going to purchase now with their funds, what, and, and so that's an online, remember that those are a lot of lines that come into that twenty thousand. So there may be a building that was left with two hundred and other left with two thou, you know what I'm saying? So it varies. And, you know, we can't use this money now, okay? So because of the year has closed.
So as we go forward.
Correct. So this year, with their building budgets and so forth, and thinking about Lucy Cockens and stuff like that, that has been on the radar to make sure that the books are purchased. I know Shelley and I just had a conversation about that today, about classroom libraries and making sure that those monies are expended. So we hear what you're saying.
Good, good. Thank you very much.
Yes.
So how much are you asking for again, please?
So requesting a total transfer of three hundred thousand from regular instruction, two hundred eighty thousand into special ed, and twenty thousand into system admin. And there is a motion written out that addresses that language on that.
Yes, the motion is to move-
Public discussion line?
Sure.
Go ahead, just, there's- Just, I'm going to reference it when I speak, so I want you to know what I'm referencing. You want me to do it, Adam? Is it easier?
No, we can just pass it down.
Laura Garcia, Twenty Skilling's Corner Road. I have two children in the system, one at Edward Little and one at AMS. Last year, around this time, I was following school affairs, actually, beginning in February, I became very involved. And it was around this time last year in November, actually, that the school committee meeting was actually held at AMS. I don't know if you recall, but it was held in the library. I think I was probably one of the only people present for the public. And at that time, the discussion was that as a result of the audit, there was a proposal made to transfer three hundred and sixty thousand from general instruction to cover an overage of a half million in special education, and also ninety thousand in system administration. And at the time, I remember kind of being taken aback for a couple of reasons. One is we often hear that there is not enough money to hire certain positions or to give raises to our teachers who are underpaid as compared to other districts. So I wondered about the three hundred and sixty thousand in general instruction, how it was that we had that much money left over. And then I also wondered how we'd missed the mark with regard to special education to the extent of a half a million, and then in system administration, close to a hundred thousand. So I went about asking some- So I went about asking some questions. What I've given you are three emails that I forwarded to, one Katie Grandin, one to Adam Hansen, and one to Ryan Fairchild. These reflect, at the time, some of my concerns that I had, and I filed FOAAs. With regard to the one that I sent to Superintendent Grandin, the focus was really on human resources within our Auburn school department. I had heard a lot about the attrition rate of teachers and teachers leaving and teachers being unhappy, and I wondered if a teacher has an issue with something that goes on, who do they complain to? I know I stated to you before that I was formerly an employment lawyer, so it made me wonder, you know, who's the EEOC officer? Who's doing Superintendent Grandin's evaluation? I think I actually have that question here, it was presented. Who does hiring and firing? Who's posting the positions?
To the topic, please. Go ahead, go ahead.
So I sent this. This one particularly had to do with the fact that many teachers were upset about the Franklin decision that was announced without them having any input. It then got reversed. So that was kind of what prompted that email. The one to Mr. Fairchild was my attempt to try to figure out how it was we missed the mark by a half a million. So I had a few questions there for him. And then Mr. Hansen had been very forthcoming with information. It took me a while to dig down to why we missed the mark by 90,000, but I discovered that it was a result of a contract provision that provided monies to people who'd been within the system. Jude Seer had received a check in excess of 40,000 for his service. I'm assuming that perhaps part of the salary overage, I mean, in system administration is due to Kevin Shaw leaving. I'm assuming there was a payout, a significant payout, because I remember his name was on the list of one of the people that fell under the other contract. Is that accurate, Adam?
No, that was part of school administration.
Okay, so that wouldn't be part of these monies?
Correct.
Okay, last, it was when it was Jude Seer, so.
Because he's budgeted under system administration.
Okay. So then the next question I have is, I remember in reviewing the budget that there was approximately 145,000 left for substitute teachers that didn't get used. Is that accurate? And was that in general instruction?
Is this from last year?
From 2007, 2018.
I don't know that.
Okay. I guess one of the things I would like to know, just listening tonight about the reasons for the transfers and stuff, is I've heard from the teachers that they're doing a lot of, losing their planning periods, because they have to cover for their lack of substitutes. And I'm thinking it might be a sticking point for them when they see that administration is getting extra pay for putting in extra time, and they're not. That's part of what we have noted here. So, but what I really wanted to get to, Ms. Hayes, is the fact that I sent these three letters out, and what I got in response was a letter from Superintendent Grandin, who basically provided a chart of the questions I asked, with the amount of time it would take, and indicated that I'd have to pay $400 for the information. Under the law, FOAAs, you have to at least give an hour's worth of work free, okay? I had already paid the school department $225 to find out that David Stephen had actually been contracted for 10,000 to do the visioning thing at AMS, even though I asked you that night, Katie, who hired him? And you said, he's with the architects, I don't know, you'll have to ask Adam Lee.
Laura, we're talking about tonight.
I know.
Budget, you're bringing back things way back from the.
No, what I'm bringing back, what I'm talking about, Katie, is the fact that requests for information, in the time that I've been trying to find out what's going on in the district, have often been met with misleading statements that at times are purposeful.
That I've done misleading?
Yes, that night.
Okay, now you're being disrespectful, so.
Okay. My point is that information is not forthcoming, and I am sharing with you the chart, because I think there are some questions there that all of you should be asking. They're the questions that I asked last year when you made this exact same transfer. And interestingly, on the chart is the question about who evaluates the superintendent. And we found out in the last couple of meetings that we didn't know what the process or procedure was. But this request was made last December, Ms. Hayes. So I just would like you to reflect on those emails that I sent. They were good-natured, they were meant as collaborative efforts to better understand the budget, because we did transfer substantial funds. And this year, as you know, we were doing the same thing. We were putting in teacher salaries for 55.5 for the teachers that were leaving the district. And we knew very well that there would be excess monies because we were going to hire cheaper inexperienced teachers. And you heard Adam just say a few minutes ago that the excess in general instruction is due to teacher salary adjustments equalling 221,000. So I guess I would ask, are we going to expect the same kind of transfer next year? Or are we actually going to budget according to what the cost centers have? Thank you.
Thank you. I do want to clarify that, we don't, we don't, we hire the most qualified teacher for the position. I just want, I don't want people in the public to think we don't.
Let's not, we're, let's not just have an argument over this right now, tonight.
I'd like people to be clear.
Let's, let's, let Adam proceed and go from there.
I do think I need to clarify one thing that was mentioned. I just want to be clear, even though the cost overage that we're asking for a transfer on is in the category called system administration, the pay that we're talking about for days going from seven and a half to eight hours, is for hourly, non-exempt employees, this is not for management. So I just think it's very important to make that clear.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, so are you done? What are we doing here?
I am, I am done, and so now I would request a vote on the transfer.
All right, I would like a motion, I'll read the motion, somebody can second it, first it, or whatever. Move to authorize the superintendent of schools and business manager pursuant to section 2307 and 1485-4 of Title 20A of the main revised statutes as amended to transfer amounts between cost centers approved for the 2019 fiscal year operating budget, provided that the total operating budget for the fiscal year shall not be increased by such transfers as presented.
Oh, moved.
Second, please.
Second.
Any discussion from the board on this?
Yeah, I would just hope that in our coming budget year, if I'm lucky enough or unlucky enough to be re-elected, to go over this budget, that we actually plan for actual costs versus actual expenses, so we don't have to make these humongous transfers at the end of the year and the next year.
Thank you. Any other discussion?
Ditto.
Okay. I can't say anything, it's, all right.
I'm never quick.
All right, so we have a second on that, and we've had discussion. All in favor of transfer, please? All opposed? You got it, Adam. You're transferred.
Thank you, Ed.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks, Adam.
All right, Adam, you still on?
I am, so at this point, I'd like to ask Billy Hunter to come up and sit in the other hot seat next to me. As well as asking Chris Goslin and Bob Griffin, is Russ here?
Yes.
Adam, your next one is financial reports.
Oh.
But they still can come up.
Well, they can come up if they'd like to, because they'll be coming up in a minute.
Okay, the financial reports is the monthly report? Is that what you're doing next?
That would be the monthly report, yes.
Hope, hope, faith. Faith, hope. Would you like to take that tonight, please?
You're, Adam, are you speaking to the other form you sent out, right about the, I'm guessing that's what these people are here for?
Yes, but I think right now we're talking about the regular monthly financials for, I believe, reports for June and August were sent out.
Right, and actually, there was not much action, not much money, much action being done on this, because we are still new into the year at this time, so.
Right.
We're like, there was nothing.
Right, right.
The lines that have had activity, which is lines that are for year-round types of things, are on track at this point. And things like teacher salaries, there's no expenditure at this point, because those begin in September.
So we do need, that's the, that's the monthly report, so we do need that approved. Can I have a motion to approve the monthly report, please?
So moved.
A second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Motion carries, unanimous. Now what do you want?
Now you're on your state, now we can talk about that. Now you're on state revolving renovation fund.
All right, well, let's see if this works.
Is Russ here?
No.
No, okay. You need Tanya's help?
I think I got it. This TV didn't come on. Was trying to make that technology part as safe as possible. So I, in advance, I want to apologize, we had mentioned that we were working on some potential projects to submit for the state revolving renovation fund. That deadline is rapidly approaching, it's September 30th, and I did not have my complete budgets until this morning. So I apologize, I wasn't able to send out the figures in advance, but I have handed them out, you each have it in front of you, Michelle has some extra copies.
Before you go on, can you explain what the revolving?
Yes, I will.
Thank you.
So the state revolving renovation fund is a pot of money that becomes available periodically from the state of Maine for schools to submit for capital projects. And a couple months ago, the Department of Ed announced that there was $25 million available for an upcoming round of funds. And so we always try to take advantage of those whenever we can, because it's the best deal going. It's an interest-free loan from the Maine Bond Bank, and the state forgives a portion of the principal equal to the amount, to the share of state funding that you get through the EPS formula. So in Auburn's case, that's 61% forgiven, leaving us to pay 39% interest-free either, over either five years or 10 years. So with that as the background, we took a look at three potential projects, discussed this with Billy Hunter, our Director of Support Services, who's joined me up here, with Mel Cole from Northeast Building Consultants, who works with us to plan our capital projects, as well as with Katie and the administration. And we set our sights on three potential projects, so we discussed those with finance committee on Monday.
We did.
And after some good discussion, we decided to request that the school board proceed with two projects, and that the third be placed on our long-term capital improvement plan. And I'd be remiss if I didn't introduce these gentlemen, we have Bob Griffin from the middle school, and Chris Goslin from RETC SOS. So with that, the first project we'll be submitting, after consulting with our safety expert, Scott Parker, is to totally redesign the entrance of Auburn Middle School.
That was one of our key issues, that when we knew that this revolving loans were coming up, that we needed to be sure that our buildings were safe, and we talked about the entrances to our buildings on it. Unfortunately, we don't have enough money to do them all, and the revolving loan won't cover all of them. But we decided to start here and there, at the middle school primarily, and going from there. So go ahead, I'm sorry.
No, thank you, Bonnie. And discussing with Scott Parker, this was identified as the top priority if we were to redesign one. And so what you see here is the outside, you can see there are two doors that enter the school, and the main office is across a hallway from those entrances. So it's far from ideal from a security standpoint. So we worked with Stephen Blatt Architects to come up with a design proposal and a budget. And what we're looking at doing is, if you can see to the right, some windows on the far right, that's classroom space. That would become the location of the new main office, and that classroom space would move back to where the current main office is. And there would be a secure entry area, once people are through the first secure door, there's another door, and they can either go into a reception area or be allowed in, through into the school. So it'd be a huge improvement. And so if Mr. Griffin has anything to add, I'll let him jump in at this point.
Yeah, again, if I could just, just add a couple of things, I, as principal of the school, if I were asked, what is my top priority, I'm going to say safety is number one. And I have never worked in a district that has taken safety so serious as this district does here. I've been incredibly impressed in my, my year here, and I can say, just this very week, we had trainings with our emergent, school-based emergency response team, we had a whole staff training, this is, this is very serious work. And when I think of priorities at the middle school around safety, this is absolutely it. You know, I want our school to be a friendly, welcoming place, but I want it to be secure, and I want it to be safe. How schools are designed now versus how they were designed when Auburn Middle School was put together were very different. And though we do have things like procedures and protocols and cameras and everything like that, and we do have the secretary positioned in a certain way, so she is sort of in eyesight, but she's also answering the phone, doing all of that stuff, there is still a significant distance from that main entryway, where someone could come in and head in a different direction, where this would tighten all of that up. I think this is a very, very wise move, again, want to be friendly, want to be welcoming, but absolutely, safety and security are top priority. I've been impressed with the process so far in creating sort of drafts of this, and when I looked at what was come up with, and where it really balanced, you know, we're not losing classroom space, we're not doing things like that, this, I, it's my hope that this, this could be supported. I think this is, is a really important thing in looking at the safety and security as it pertains to Auburn Middle School.
Thank you, Bob. Adam? Alfreda?
Principal Griffin, I know when I came to visit, when you first came aboard, I mean, you're on the left where you can't, we can't even see the window. Would that mean that you were able to grab a couple of those windows up there and be able to see from a bird's eye view?
So I actually made a shift this year, because I wanted to be closer to the main office, where my office had been the second floor, and in my world, that was a little bit too removed. I have moved myself downstairs, so I'm sitting just right off of the main office. I believe that, at least that's where I want to be.
Good.
Because I know, in looking at the statistics, if there's going to be a tense situation, in all likelihood, it's going to be in the front entrance area of the school or the main office area, so as principal, I want to be there. This, how this would create, would absolutely allow the administration to be right there in the, in the office area, which I think is, is very wise.
And actually, when it was constructed, when the school was constructed, the office was downstairs. So, I'm sorry, Pat?
I have another question.
Go ahead, go ahead, Neil.
Can you explain, there are two doors in, and you're going to move it to the right, is there going to be a third entrance in, or are you just leaving the two entrances?
Just the two.
Just the two, and the one to the right would be the entrance, and all traffic would be, would flow through there.
Is the other one still going to be used for a means of egress?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, the, the entryway to the left and the middle, which is where the stairwell is, those won't be changed. So the activity in the front will be to the right, and as well as the offices, office space in the back.
Can you label it?
Exit?
Office, or something? Because when I go there, I never know which door it will go in.
Add some more signage?
The, what's, what's the word that we use? The navigation, the wayfaring is, is less than user-friendly there, so we're hoping that's going to improve greatly as well as a benefit to go along with this.
Good question. Anybody else have any questions?
So, just to get to the financial piece of it, the estimated project cost from Stephen Blatt Architects is 190,000 total. After the state forgiveness, that would leave us paying 74,100 over five years, so we'd be budgeting 14,820 per year for five years to accomplish this project.
Okay.
Any more questions on that project?
No, thank you.
So Russ Barla wasn't, isn't able to be here, but this is a project you're familiar with, you've seen these pictures when, at CIP time. So we think the Franklin replacement of the lift with an elevator and refurbishing of the downstairs bathrooms to also be ADA accessible is a perfect project to submit for this type of program. So the lift is nearing the end of its useful life, we've been told that when it's inspected. It is inspected annually, it is safe, but we've been told you better start thinking about what you want to do. So replacing that with an, with an elevator, which would actually be on the outside of the building, a full-service elevator that would take people to every floor as needed. a full-service elevator that would take people to every floor as needed. As well as overhauling the bathrooms, as you can see, they're not in the greatest shape, so they would be much more appealing, as well as ADA accessible. So this is a very large project. The estimated total cost, working with Harriman Architects on this one, was $1,198,184 for the total project. Of that, the elevator's about $815,000, and the bathroom's about $383,000. So the maximum amount eligible per building, per project, is $1 million. So what we could potentially do is submit this project, if it's approved, Auburn's share of the million would be $390,000, the rest would be forgiven. And so that would be $39,000 per year for 10 years. And then the remaining $198,184, I would propose that we submit that in next year's capital improvement plan proposal, that that be part of what we request in our CIP funds.
Any questions to Adam? Pat?
Okay, let's say that this flies with the state, but the remainder doesn't fly with the CIP request. What do we do?
Well, we expect to get approval from the state late January, early February. So we're sort of in the ballpark of the CIP timeframe. I think, Pat, worst-case scenario, as you're describing, I would probably request you as a board to reallocate some of our existing CIP. We've already identified this as a top priority, we have to deal with it. So that would be my take on that.
It's already on the CIP list.
It's already on the list.
It's already on the list, which is good.
We were hoping to do it next summer.
Which means that we would've paid the whole thing versus...
Correct.
It is possible that the state could say...
Let's listen. Go ahead, Adam.
The state could potentially say, yeah, we'll do the elevator, we're not gonna do the bathrooms, or vice versa. And so when that decision comes down, we can decide what we want to do. But we think the best course of action is to submit the whole thing, because it needs to be done, and hope for the best.
And that's why we talked about in the Finance Committee meeting, that there were several projects that we could submit to the state, but we felt as though these two, the safety and the elevator at RETC, were important. And the state could ultimately, if we submitted four, they could choose the two they want, or the one they want, and then these two, which we think are high priority, would not have the chance, so.
These are very competitive loans, and they haven't been brought out for a long time by the state. So we were very lucky in years past, that we always got a revolving loan. We did many of our projects, right, Billy, with our revolving loans on it?
I don't know if they are, yeah.
Right, so when this came up, we, at the Finance Committee, said we need to look at this and go for it. So keep our fingers crossed that we get all of it, or part of it at least on it, at least some part of it that we get.
Right. So these were the two projects that we identified with Finance Committee as our top priorities. And the third project that we discussed was, the RETC SOS building on Lake Street has never had an elevator. So in that sense, it's grandfathered, but we talked about, if we had an elevator, people could access both floors. Right now, when you enter, it's a split level, and people aren't gonna be able to go up or down.
It's just like Franklin.
Yeah, it's actually designed just the same way as Franklin, but it doesn't have the lift that Franklin has.
Right.
So we asked Harriman to drop a budget on that. The estimated total was $791,000, which would've left our share at $308,000 over 10 years. And we decided for two reasons. One, that the other, the other two projects were the top priorities over this, although we felt this would be of great potential benefit to either a student, parent, community member that might need that access. But we decided we didn't want to risk having this project approved over one of the others, and it's also a large financial commitment. So, Mr. Goslin was very gracious in understanding that. And so we're recommending that this be placed on our capital improvement plan as a future project, as we see what the future holds for that building, and evaluating, is it something that's worth making this kind of investment in? So, that's what the Finance Committee is bringing to you tonight, in requesting approval on the middle school and the Franklin projects, to submit the applications.
Need a motion? Yes, we do need a motion on it. So can I have a motion to submit the applications for the revolving?
So moved.
A second?
Second.
Thank you. Any further discussion on this? Okay, you got it, Adam.
Go take the vote.
We got a vote. I'm looking at everybody, I'm sorry. So, all in favor? All opposed? We got it.
Thank you for all the footwork that you did.
Thank you.
Thank you for being on weight, but you'll get there.
All good.
Yes.
Thank you. Thank you, gentlemen.
Stephen Blatt and Harriman Architects were extremely accommodating to meet this tight deadline, because the state does require an architect to come up with the budget. So I really appreciate how flexible they were making that happen for us.
Both of these architects have done very well with us.
Yes.
On it, so they're very, very good.
Yeah, they've done very well.
We've done very well by them on it. Any further, are you all done?
Done with that piece.
Okay.
Now we have Planning and Development, which is to review our summer capital improvement projects.
Billy's still in the hot seat?
I didn't ask if you had anything to add on that.
No, I'm all set. You did a very good job.
So with that, this is, this is one of our favorite things to do. After we've gone through the lengthy process of getting approval for our CIP funds, determining the priorities, et cetera, we then have a very short window every summer to try to do as much as we can. And I, some of the projects we did were very exciting, and I'm excited to show you the outcomes. So with that, a picture says a lot more than I can say. So, this is the Walton Cafeteria.
Oh, wow.
Wow.
So, very industrial and unfriendly, boarded-up windows, and you can see all the ventilation and everything up above. So Cheryl Cornelio, our administrative assistant, helped me put this together, and I said, just for Walton, can you have it do something where the picture turns into the new, so just indulge me, just for this one picture. We have a little special effect for you.
Wow.
So this is what the Walton Cafeteria now looks like. Windows, a nice lowered ceiling, it feels like an entirely different space.
Very nice job.
I think we've gotten some good feedback on it.
Very nice. Billy, are you jumping in?
I'd just say, there's new LED lights there also, to go with the project.
New LED lights, okay.
So we're gonna see some side-by-sides. Walton got a lot of, had a lot of projects this summer. And I should just back up a second. All of these projects have been on our approved list from past years, so just wanted to clarify that. Here's Walton Boys Bathroom before and after. Here's another angle that really highlights the change.
Wow.
Very nice. Looks like an EL bathroom on the right.
Yes.
Yeah. EL colors.
Yeah. Very nice.
Here's the girls' bathroom. That pink had worn out its welcome.
Yeah.
The salmon, yes, thank you.
Was it? It looks like salmon.
And again, there's the other angle on that.
Very nice.
This is the exterior of the cafeteria. So the boarded-up windows are now windows. And we are putting some protective materials over those. Has that happened yet, Billy?
No, it has not.
Okay. It'll be happening very soon.
Soon?
Very soon.
Very soon, okay.
Could be within the next week.
Okay, thank you.
Walton fence, that gives you a good idea of the kind of shape it was in. You can't quite see, but at the top, there had been many attempts to repair and reattach over the years, and it was a little ugly.
The backwards sign is a patch for a hole in the fence.
Oh, jeez. Okay, real nice.
So with that...
Ooh.
There's a before and after on the new fence.
Awesome.
I have a question.
And then an angle facing the bleachers.
So the fencing behind the players' bench, that a butts, like the walkway in front of the bleachers, is that being changed, or what's going on with that?
No, that hasn't been changed, and it probably won't be changed this year. A lot of that will have a different look and flow when we get put in the new bleachers in the spring.
Okay. I just saw, when I was at the football game Friday, kids were hanging and swinging.
Yeah.
Made me a little nervous, but, okay, so I didn't know if that was in repair, or that's staying.
That replaced an actual steel cable that was just hanging there for...
Okay.
Forty or 50 years.
Okay. Thank you.
So it was a slight improvement, but it wasn't in the CIP, so that's what we put in for right now, just to separate the players from the spectators.
Can we take and put some signs up that say, "Do not swing, do not climb, do not whatever" on these?
The parents were saying, "Whose kids are those?" They weren't mine, no, they weren't mine.
Can we do something that says that?
Yeah, we can do something for you.
Okay, thank you.
Absolutely.
Back inside, this is right outside the cafeteria. So again, these windows that were covered over are now beautiful windows with a lot of natural light coming in.
Nice. Love it.
You know, we went through that time when we were conscious of using too much energy, and we boarded everything up. So, it's good to see, like, natural light coming in.
If you look at Walton School from the outside, especially at night, it's just a jewel, and this makes it even more so.
Very pretty.
Still at Walton, these are the lockers. So the, the long-suffering lockers have been replaced, and the inside of that one, you can't really tell, but the bottom is caved in, and that's very representative of how most of them were. And the amount of stuff underneath when they took them out was amazing. So there's beautiful new lockers, upstairs and downstairs.
Love the color.
Did you find enough money to support this being done, in those treasures?
I don't think we found any of those types of treasures. I did find...
This was Michelle's school, right?
Yes.
We did find an apple that, I'd like to see how far back that went. This is the best visual I could give you on the Walton roof. We, did we replace or repair that?
That was, that was a, that was a repair. They fix all the, go over all the seams, reglue them, and the vents and stuff like that.
It looks like a school and not a jail now.
That's the goal. So, moving on to our biggest project, which is still ongoing, but is getting nearer to completion every day, and projected completion at end of October, is the two new classrooms at Park Avenue, which is actually three new rooms. So what you're seeing here is looking from the outside of one of the classrooms through the, I guess I'll call it auxiliary room, until use is determined, into the second classroom. And if you went over there today, you'd see that the walls are up, and it's really starting to look like school classrooms over there.
And there's bathrooms in that area too, right? Didn't we have, don't we have two bathrooms going into that area? No bathrooms?
No, there wasn't, there wasn't a need to increase bathrooms.
And this is just another shot to give you some context of what that looks like.
That roof looks like it's buckling there on the left-hand side.
So that's the design of the, of the building. It has an angle to it. And I was actually asking about that, and I think that was for Stephen Blatt to give the building some character. And I'm sure it had some more functional use to it.
Just some architecture, so it isn't just a rectangle.
Yeah, some architecture.
Okay.
But it is not buckling, I can assure you of that. So we did, we upgraded our lighting at several schools as part of the Siemens Performance contract, but we still had six facilities left to do. Based on the money available, we went ahead and did Fairview, which is nearly complete, but this is just, this is just a shot of the gym to give you a sense. And we're hoping to do the other five schools before the school year is out. We're just waiting on some other projects to be completed, and make sure that we're good to go ahead with the funding on those. Fairview Library carpet, that's a brand-new carpet in there. I wish I had the before picture for you with the coffee stains, but it looks really nice. They also did some other things in there, and opened up the space quite a bit, so it looks really nice.
It's brighter.
And in the rear door, you can see on the left, the handicap accessible entry. So that's now a handicap accessible door in the rear of the building.
Thank you.
Actually, I should mention also, you see the number 14 above the door?
Yeah.
Project we completed last spring, we numbered the exterior doors on all of our buildings to assist with first responders arriving in the event of an emergency. And we paid for those through the CIP safety funds that we have.
Very good.
Along the same lines, in the last few weeks, we put, and this is a before picture, you can see things through the window. So we've put tint on, was it four or five schools?
Five.
Five, five of the schools that had real exposure to the office as you approached the building, Park Avenue here being probably the prime example. So if you walk by those windows now, you cannot see in. So it's just an added security measure, give people inside a little more time to react, if needed.
And when you look out them, you think a quick storm has come on, when you've just walked in the front door.
Yeah, it always looks like it's about to rain.
The other day, I was like, whoa, the weather's changed.
It's like you have sunglasses on all the time.
And I just wanted to summarize with projects that are on the approved list that are due to, that are scheduled to happen over the next year or so. Upgrading the sprinkler pump at the middle school, changing the generator at Park Avenue over. What are we changing it from in two, Billy?
It's, currently, it's fueled by, by heating oil. And we have, the school used to, was originally heated with heating oil. We changed the school over to natural gas a number of years ago. So the 4,000-gallon tank sitting in the ground is there just for the generator, which it's had that amount of gallons in it for five years now.
Oh, it must be really good.
So it's, to save money and to get away from some federal regulations for in-ground tanks and whatever, when we went to natural gas, we, we set it up so it could be an additional line run over to the generator. So we're gonna change the generator from a, from a diesel generator to a natural gas generator. And we won't ever have to worry about it running out of fuel, or, or any federal regulations for in-ground tanks.
Billy, this is a disaster school. This is where we would go if there was a disaster here. So that has to be appointed by the federal government, is that correct? Or some, or the city or something?
The city designates.
Guess where I'm going with this, is that if that generator was to be used for a disaster...
Right.
For, for the community.
Right, correct.
Are we responsible for the upkeep of that tank, or that generator? Or do we get city funds too?
The tank is something we've always taken care of, because it was part of the project originally, and it, and did heat the building. The generator replacement...
Well, the good news is, the city is gonna have some funding available through the Homeland Security Grant. And that should be coming up soon here. So yes, there is good news on that.
Okay, good.
But it is Auburn's only shelter, so.
Right, it is, right.
The remaining LED light upgrades that I mentioned, some new doors at Washburnham Park Avenue, new choir risers at the middle school, which I've learned just came in, so your crew has some more stuff to put together. A new servers at Central Office, an upgrade to the Walton Theater and Stage Equipment. The big project, the Walton Bleachers, just a quick update on that, that will be done next spring, to ensure that we have enough time to decide what we want to do with the press box. So we're discussing that with the city, is their interest in the future on their part. So we'll have plenty of time over the winter to decide what we want to do with those, but those will, the bleachers will be replaced next spring. Fairview Roof Upgrade, Fairview Classroom Furniture Upgrade, Playground Equipment Upgrades, Security Systems for remaining schools, and a new one-ton pickup with plow. So those are all still to come, based on our already-approved CIP funds.
No snow this year, so we really don't need that one ton.
No.
We'll see how that goes.
No snow days, no nothing.
I'm all for that.
That's it for me.
That's it? So do I need to have a vote on anything else? We're all set?
No motion, no vote on that, that was just an update for you.
Good, thank you very much. Any questions for Adam?
I just have one question about the Fairview Classroom furniture. How was that decided versus other schools that may need furniture?
That was just based on need that was brought forward to us. And so, based on that expressed need, we put it into the... But we talk with every building administrator each year at Budget Time. And one of the questions we ask is, "Do you have any capital needs?" And so, every year, we have those discussions, and so that emerged from those discussions.
And one other question has to do with propane or gas versus oil, that kind of thing. Knowing what just happened in Farmington, my niece and nephew were involved in that. And so, you know, once they find out what happened, this was a brand-new building, they had just put it together. They'd only been using it for a few months. So, I would just say, I hope that we'll be cautious in terms of how to detect if there's anything wrong, so that we don't have an explosion. I, I love to cook with the gas, but I'm scared of it. So, you know, and I know it's a pretty tricky solvent.
Okay, so we're moving right along here. We're into... Bob?
So, let's keep it going.
We are.
We are, Bob. We are. We're doing school board business, so we are, yes. On it, so, information and committee reports. We're on to the committee reports. And because you would like to get out first, Bob, do you, you're on the policy committee. Do you have anything to report tonight?
No, we do not.
Okay, are you going to work with Michelle to schedule a meeting so we can get these updated policies done? Please?
And I need a new partner.
Yes, you do. You'll get one, yes. Okay, all right, so we've done the finance committee. Wellness, Faith? Okay. City Council, just school committee stuff, just school stuff.
Yeah, none of, none of it is, is school committee related.
Okay, that's, so...
But the clock tower is going to ring for the first time on November 2nd during, during the school weekend comeback home.
Alumni weekend.
Alumni weekend. Eleven o'clock on, on November 2nd, Saturday.
Thank you very much. Communications, nothing in that yet. Faith, the audit committee?
So, as Adam said, the auditors are finishing up. We met with them Friday?
Friday?
Oh, gosh, seems like... Overall, it's going well. They are going to be here for a couple more weeks because they need to look into something that, something that came up. They did have recommendations, three on the school side, three on the city side, but no findings. So, that's, that is good news. So, the three school ones were, they're still looking into the high school, how they cash the receipts, and that the deposits are made in timely fashion. And how the secretary signs off on the backup of receipts. And let's see, I don't need to go over the city ones, right?
No. I think our findings, our recommendations were strictly with the middle school...
Yep, and the high school.
Right. And keeping money too long, and you know what those, those recommendations will be, will get it written.
Right, so we'll be following up with the high school and the middle school on those concerns.
Right. Pat, how about curriculum? Not yet. How about Community Learning Center? Okay, how about the Share Center?
Yes.
Oh, yay!
I've fallen in love with the Share Center. I really have. And I really appreciate the work that Lisa Rodriguez does over there and the effort she makes to keep things out of the trash and out of landfills. She's doing a crackerjack job. This, at this time, they're over $7,000 over, surplus of what they had last year. At this time, there are new school systems, new homeschoolers, and other organizations who are enrolling and it's still continuing. So, she's really happy about that. I'm not going to talk about everything, but one of the things that's coming up, the Dempsey Challenge, is the end of the month. And Lisa's running a table at the Kid Zone, following with the theme of Pirates. Is the whole theme Pirates? Jimmy, is that... You're looking at me like... Just the Kid Zone, yeah. And she's really excited about that. And she's used products that have been donated to Share Center in order to do the crafts for the students. So, it's a good opportunity for her to advertise what's done and encourage other people to participate. That's it.
Pat, if we have things, as you know, I have a whole garage full of things. If I find interesting things there that I think might be used, can I donate them?
Yes, you can.
Can anybody else donate?
Yes, she just got a tremendous amount of furniture from Bowdoin College. There's VR equipment, file cabinets, anything that people can dedicate. And a lot of local businesses, I know when I was at Yale, Liberty Mutual, St. Mary's had donated a lot of furniture. And it's, it saves the landfills. And a lot of, especially smaller school systems, really save an awful lot of money by reusing and recycling this stuff. So, it's, it's a great effort, and I appreciate the work that she does.
Pat, are there any items that are in high need that she identifies that...
She hasn't voiced any, but you can call her. She's located in where Billy disappeared to, at the back of the room. She's in the, she's up there with the maintenance.
Industrial Avenue.
Okay, yes.
Thank you, very interesting. Okay, Dan, how would, how's the buses running?
Yeah, no appeal.
No complaints, no appeals?
Yeah, I think he had, he called me too, and I think he had followed up on that. Brian?
Yeah, we had, I had one lady reach out to me, and I reached out to Adam. And I believe that got resolved. They were just outs, just outside, based on the mileage. So, the agreement was that they could walk to one that was a little closer, a bus stop that was closer. And I think, I, I didn't hear back from you, Adam, but I'm assuming that that was fine with the, the mother.
There's been no negotiations at this time. And then, the crown jewel, the new ELHS Building Committee met last night. We met in sub, sub committees, thank you. We met in subcommittees, it's getting late. We met in subcommittees before the meeting. And we came up with some finalizations that are going to come out soon. And some further discussion about the athletic and the performing arts. And it was a very interesting meeting. We then went into full session with the whole board, and we progressed through that. So, we're, we're still working diligently on the new school. Okay.
Bonnie? Thanks if they could name something, room or a wing or something after Tom.
We will discuss that, yes, as it comes up on it, yes, on it. We have some ideas that we're talking about now. As you all know, that Tom's passion was computers, technology. He was passionate about the building systems, how they work, and how it can be incorporated into education at the high school. So, we are working on, on, on things that we know that Tom was passionate about. So, okay.
Bonnie, will somebody be taking Tom's place in that committee?
We haven't even discussed that.
Okay, but it's...
We don't, we don't even know yet. We haven't even thought about that part of it yet. You're right, good thought. Okay, what else, Katie?
So, as we finish with meetings that are coming up, we have three regular meetings, August, August. October 2nd, October 16th, and November 6th. And so, I know, Alfreda, you sent some agenda items that to be considered. So, I think the group needs to talk about what we're going to cover in the next three regular meetings. So, one was the rate of student attrition that staff is working on. One was MCL, PBL, what's working, what needs to be changed. So, for me, for the MCL, PBL, I probably need some direction on what you're exactly looking for in that. PBIS, Positive Behavior Support, the school lunch program with the non-payments, the public participation policy, exit interview procedure, MEA results, which are not available at this time. An update on the new grading, which we did on August 21st. We did that already.
We did, but was hoping to find out how's it going right now, because after, like, towards the first term.
So, towards the end of the second, the first semester?
First semester, and see how things up, do a check...
So, that might be January, yeah, okay.
Checkpoint.
The other, I'm putting that down. Scope of Staff Activities for Half-Day Early Release, which I know...
That was great, thank you so much.
I shared information with you, and that will be also on our Facebook page. And you suggested going home, and so we're...
Sending it. That was very, very good. Thank you so much.
So, I don't know what people, those, I'll give you the list.
Yeah, there was one other here, the hot lunch program. Do, do you need further clarification of that? Because we're all over it in Finance Committee every month.
Yep.
Are you all right with that then?
Well, I'm all right with the way things are going home as far as the bills are concerned, you know, that kind of thing. And, and the only thing, I had a suggestion, you know, if their parents truly cannot pay and they don't qualify for free, you know, you know, can they, I asked the question because I don't know what it is the answer is. But can they, you know, substitute when you need substitutes in the kitchen, that kind of thing? But I don't think labor laws might not permit that.
Right, right, exactly. And we, we've discussed that before too, to see if they could kind of work it off, right?
Trying to think of ways that they could pay it back.
We, we can eliminate that for now?
That's fine.
Okay.
Thank you.
What?
I just said there'd be even more embar, embarrassing for a kid, my dad's washing dishes.
Good point, Bob. Okay, so...
So, they're probably, so I can take the list and work with Bonnie around when things are going to happen and what we can do before the next board comes on.
If everybody is interested in these items on it. And thank you very much for suggesting these on it. And if anybody else has any suggestions for future meetings, our time is running out. So, you know, we need to...
We could prioritize which ones to take on first, that's most immediate. Take those first.
Okay. Pat, you okay with that?
Which one?
Any of them. Do you want any, do you want to eliminate or...
Well, I thought, some of them we've, we've had repeatedly, over and over. I guess the PBIS, is it fully implemented across all of this?
We can do an update on that.
Because we had one in January, I think.
Yeah.
Well, I can't read it from here, so that's all right. What else there, Katie?
I mean, on October 2nd, right now, I have planned the volleyball. We have a volleyball club happening at EL, and there's over, what is it, 28 girls right now that are doing a volleyball club? So, they need to come forward, and, and they're really excited to share about their club and looking at it being a sport next year. So, they're planning on coming. We need to do a delegate for the...
Convention, MSMA.
Convention for MSMA, doing an enrollment update, which we do every year. So, those were set for October 2nd.
Do the volleyball delegation in, prior to our meetings? Prior to our meeting on the 2nd?
What do you mean?
Well, are they...
You have to nominate, you have to do it...
The volleyball?
Well, volleyball is, is, they're going to do a presentation and tell you about their club.
Can we do it in a workshop?
That's the Steve Westler workshop on October 2nd.
Okay, we can, all right.
But we can do possibly a PBIS workshop on the 16th or the 6th.
Okay, you and I'll discuss it, and we'll go from there.
Yeah.
Okay?
So, we'll take them, and then we'll prioritize them, we'll get what's coming up.
Thank you, appreciate that.
And if there's anything else, just send it our way, okay? All right, good.
Anything else tonight? Okay, entertain a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
I'm moving. Okay, a second?
Second.
We're all seconded. Got it, Brian? Thank you very much, guys, and thank you, the audience, for coming tonight.
Good job, Bonnie.